We're live.
Okay, great. So we will call this meeting to order of the Grand Marais Planning Commission. First thing, we have our consent agenda here and that's our roll call, the agenda as it is, and the minutes. Do, does anybody have any thoughts about the last minutes? Did we look them over?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. So now we are on to our public hearing and the way that this will roll is the first thing we're going to do is we'll have Patrick read any of the messages that we got in the mail. And then after that, it'll be the opportunity for the community to make comments and then we'll hear from the Bjorkberg folks and that'll be over to the commissioners. So with that, are you ready, Patrick?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. This message is from Jennifer Schultz. Unfortunately, I will be unable to attend the meeting today regarding the Bjorkberg project. I would like to make the following comment. In the Bjorkberg plan, I did not see potential pricing listed for any of the housing units. Is there any attempt here to meet our community's need for affordable housing? Caps, all caps, affordable housing is housing that helps us draw and retain working families. If we continue to build more housing units that are not affordable, we are drawing more seasonal residents and adding more infrastructure pressure on roads, water treatment, et cetera. More housing is not better unless it also meets our community's needs. What are the projected prices? The next letter is from Eric Humphrey. Please, oh, sorry. Dear Mayor, Councilors, and Board Members, I am writing to express my strong support for the Bjorkberg 2.0 project. As a resident who grew up and currently lives in that area of town and who cares deeply about our community's future, I believe this carefully designed development addresses critical housing needs while respecting our community's character and values. I appreciate the restraint of the project, only developing a total of 21 units and preserving over 50% of the area as green space. I also greatly appreciate the dark sky lighting compliance. Our 2040 comprehensive plan specifically identifies Grand Marais' need for diverse housing options, particularly given projections showing a large increase in our senior population. This project directly addresses this need through accessible design features and maintenance services that enable aging in place. My family has been part of this neighborhood for three generations, so I understand concerns about change. However, Bjorkberg 2.0 represents a thoughtful compromise that balances housing diversity with neighborhood preservation. The energy-efficient design, single-level living options, and moderate scale demonstrate how development can be done responsibly. Respectfully, Eric Humphrey. Got two more here. This is from Autumn Bonner. I want to write in my support for the Bjorkberg development. My husband and I are new residents to Grand Marais. We value living in higher-density housing in order to minimize our impact on the environment. This project seems to us to have, seems to us to be a great fit for the Grand Marais community because it fills that housing need without being too large of a complex. We would also value purchasing a townhome like this if we were able to garden as we like in our yard and/or have a community garden. We can't make the zoning meeting, but look forward to hearing more. Feel free to share my email with developers. And finally, from Nancy Evans. As a resident of Cook County who pays taxes to support EDA and HRA initiatives to develop housing solutions for workers and residents, it is fair to ask, why has John Peters chosen to speculate on real estate in Grand Marais? Grand Marais is a very expensive place to build due to difficult terrain and a shortage of construction workers. The project proposed does not serve the housing needs of the community. The buildings are designed to look like a commercial resort you might see at Bluefin or Steamboat Springs. Although Peters has, although Peters has difficulty providing a final cost per unit, it is fair to assume that each unit will cost an average of $450,000 to $500,000. HOA, maintenance fees of $600,000 per year minimum, plus insurance and property taxes. For senior citizens to age in place, add $25,000 to $35,000. A residential elevator and 500 per year elevator maintenance from a Duluth provider. Do these prices allow Grand Marais residents to purchase units or do the prices appeal to investors and high-income visitors? Number two, Mr. Peters and his partners have chosen to turn to the media in a Minneapolis newspaper to cry foul and paint Grand Marais as provincial and unfair to outside developers. The expectation is that the city or county or I triple R B will subsidize streets and utilities and ignore environmental impacts of a project of this size is unrealistic. The county and city relationship with this developer is adversarial before the project is started. Will that relationship improve? Calling the community member's names, i.e. NIMBY, "Not in My Backyard" and unfriendly to all developers does not create goodwill or hope for a good working relationship in the future. Please vote against this proposal. The community needs additional economic housing, economical housing, but Peters 2.0 is not a good solution. Mr. Peters has speculated by purchasing land, drawing up plans, providing romantic images of fishing villages at his own expense, but this project does not meet the community housing needs. I question if Mr. Peters wants what is best for the community. Nancy Evans, Cook County resident.
Great. Thank you, Patrick. Appreciate that. So for folks who want to speak, now will be your time. One of the basic rules is you get to speak once and for less than five minutes. So any members of the community who would like to speak, please come up here to the microphone, state your name, and tell us what you're thinking. Go right ahead.
Is there?
Yeah.
I don't usually like to go first, but I have another meeting to get to. But I just wanted to say, it was really interesting-
Could you state your name really quick?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jan Severson. And it was interesting to hear the others' comments and it speaks to the diversity of people who live here, clearly. I just want to say I'm very much in favor of this project and I'm really excited about it. And most of the comments that I've heard so far, ah, never mind, doesn't matter. I just want to say I'm really in favor. I'm excited to have this new creative energy brought in. I'm excited for the thoughtfulness and the aesthetic that it brings to Grand Marais. We are not known for our great buildings in Grand Marais. We just weren't built with aesthetics in mind. I mean, we were built with aesthetics all around us, but we were a hard-working town when it started. So any aesthetic upgrade that we can invite is very exciting to me. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Jan.
Richard Olson. I live in Hoveland. I happen to be District One Commissioner on the Housing Redevelopment Authority Board. And in that capacity, I'm here to support the project. I'm also interested in the project as somebody who might want to live in Grand Marais soon. I, this would be the project that I would want to invest in. And I believe that there are many like me. We need all kinds of housing, from the attainable on any level of income. And it's really, I don't think the place of anyone questioning this board about what the cost is going to be per unit. It shouldn't play a role in your decision. I believe that. Good talking to you.
Appreciate it.
My name is Bruce Sloop. I live on Eighth Avenue West. I'm close to the neighborhood where it's going to be, where it's going to be put in. The biggest concern I have is the traffic flow. If you look at the plot where everything is, there's no streets leading into that. There's a temporary street on Third Street. There's nothing on, there's nothing on Fourth Street that comes in. You can't access it because of the topography on Fifth Street. So that's my biggest concern is what are we going to do about getting people in and out of that nineteen, that one, that one block area with, you know, 20, 20 home units? The other concern that I have, and it was echoed up in that first thing I heard, was the overall cost of that. I'm not sure how many, I've only lived here for three and a half years, but I'm not sure how many homeowners associations are here. But who's going to cover the cost of the homeowners associations as the first residents come in? If it's, whatever it's going to be, $600 a month was what his estimate was. And I, you know, this county, from what I understand, the city, there's not a whole lot of homeowners associations. So we're dealing with a developer that is, that's a common practice for them to deal with homeowners associations. The, the project itself would be attractive to me, personally would be attractive to me. We spend about 75% of our time here. So I have to deal with, you know, snow removal and cut my grass and all of that. I would gladly pay the homeowners association. But as we're trying to attract new families and affordable housing, can a new, young family afford not only a, again, I would have to, my projections would be something similar to the 400,000 to 500,000 range, afford that mortgage in addition to an additional $600 to $1,000 of homeowners association on top of that mortgage payment? So are we attracting the people that we want? Again, it's very attractive for me. It's a very attractive, I moved here three and a half years ago. If that had been available three and a half years ago, I might have jumped right on board. I spend, again, we spend about 75% of our time here. And I call it home. You know, my wife still calls Kansas City home, you know, but you know, I still, this is where I call home. And we move back and forth because of family commitments. So I'm just, I'm really concerned about those two things. The accessibility with the current infrastructure we have, the streets surrounding it, and then the affordability, you know, the affordability for, for whoever buys it. I think it's going to attract more people that are going to use it as a secondary home, you know, where they're going to split their time, you know, somebody similar that I am, whether that's 30% of the time or 80% of the time, that's where they're going to spend most of their time. So those are my concerns. I trust the panel and everybody in here to, to make the right decision. I'm not going to try to sway anybody, but those are my concerns. And I think it's something that, that we really need to take a look at because it is where it's nestled in at right now. And I've read through some of the stuff we've had and it sounded to me like most of our multi-housing, multi-dwelling housing is supposed to be, not necessarily in the neighborhoods we currently have, that they're, in the paperwork you sent out, they're kind of supposed to be on the east side of town. That's what the policies say. That's not the east side of town. You know, again, you know, that's why, that's why they're here for a conditional permit because, you know, because those policies can be changed. I understand that. So, but that's, that's my concern. I, I think anything we can do to provide additional housing for new and current and upcoming residents that are, that are currently living with their moms and dads and we'd like them to stay in the community, you know, that we can do that, I'm all for it. But again, we have to make it affordable. You know, we, we don't want to add a bunch of taxes on existing people to put in roads and a lot of roads, you know, to make that accessible. We don't want to put the people that are currently living here and with double and triple the traffic in that small, tiny little area, which, again, I'm bordering on that area. You know, I'm not necessarily in it, but I'm bordering on that area. So I appreciate the time that everybody takes to do all this. I really do. You guys got a tough job, you know, but, you know, that's kind of how I feel about it. If, I think, if we could do something that would make the roads work better or use existing infrastructure we already have with roads, then we're in a lot better shape.
Alright, thanks, Bruce.
Before you go, can you spell your last name?
It's S's in Sam, L-O-O-P. Like the ship.
My name is Betsy Bowen and I've been a pretty long time, you know, decades-long resident here. My kids have grown up here. So I, I'd like to stick around too. And I'm, you know, personally in the category of, I wonder if I'll need, you know, easier housing looking ahead here pretty soon. And, but also just looking at the town, I'm just interested, you know, in how we go from here, what, what it is. And I, in looking through the Bjorkberg project, I, I rather like it. I, you know, I'd be supportive of it. It's, I think it's attractive and thoughtful and the, and pretty considerate. And, you know, it is in a nifty little neighborhood, being right in town, which, you know, if I were a resident there, I would find that terrific, to be able to walk, you know, actually walk places. It would be, it would kind of be, you know, if I were dreaming up something for myself, that's what I would dream up. So I, I know that it's not the only question on the table, but I, you know, thanks y'all for taking it on and I'll be interested to watch. Thanks.
Thanks, Betsy. One more.
Not a public, I hate this. Chuck Keller. I've lived here for about five years. I live about two blocks from the project. I'm really not for or against. I hate change as much as anybody does. I worry about the traffic. I wonder about how it will really be used, how it's going to impact the housing needs. My main question and interest to hear here tonight is, I've heard some things and I don't know the whole story. I've followed it a little bit, but that if it's already plotted, what control or power does this board have at this point? Can you say yes or no? What are we here to approve exactly? I'm not real clear on that. If it's plotted for one thing, if that's what they want to build, they can make their own mistakes or, you know, I don't know. Where does that come and go kind of thing is what I hope to hear about. I guess that's about it, but I just want to know.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, sir.
My name is Dave Walter. I live 215 Sixth Avenue West, full-time. And I've got a handful of more questions and then I'll make a statement later. Things, just points of clarification. In the packet on page four, it said that, item F, it said that the project would be no less than five units in a lot area of three acres. But on page 14 of the proposal, it said two acres. I guess at some point it'd be nice to be sure.
Yeah.
I don't need, I don't need to now, but I just-
Yeah. I mean, I can dress that right off that-
I think that's important to address right now. What was included in our packet was not correct.
Yeah, that was-
I thought it should have been-
What was not correct?
It is the two acre.
Okay. I never got a letter announcing this and none of my neighbors did. Were we supposed to?
I got a letter.
I don't, and again, it's not-
So yes, you should have.
I don't, I don't know. Well, two of my neighbors, immediate neighbors, we never did. We didn't know about this until last night.
Okay.
So that's a point to bring up.
I didn't get one and I live right, right next to the project, so.
Also within-
Mine today. I read mine today.
Within the proposal, I was not at all clear about the water and sewer infrastructure. Who's going to be paying for that and eventual tapping into it for future development? I, I read the paragraph about that on the page. It just wasn't clear to me. So if you could clear up that at some point or discuss that, so it's clear for future development, that would be an issue. And I guess I'll state now, I'm strongly against this project. To me, and the same as when it came up in August, same issues. To me, this is not housing that Grand Marais would benefit from at all. I talked to two realtors, again, based on the previous project, and they said that market val, they thought the market value of those units would be somewhere between $700,000 and $800,000 or up, especially if it took a year or two to build. That's market value. Now, obviously, that's a guess on their part. To me, we don't need more of that housing in Grand Marais. That's going to be drawing people from larger cities with more money. It's not affordable. It's, I doubt it's for people that want to age in place. And I think those are two of the big housing needs that we have here. And I just don't think, I want to see development, believe me. I hope you know that I'm, in my own small way, I'm committed to that. But this kind of project just doesn't help us in my book. I don't see, in the comprehensive plan, there were six separate points that favoring development and this project doesn't address those at all. It goes counter to those points. Again, this is not a project for Grand Marais. Thank you.
My name is Ryan Martenson. I'm here with my wife, Momachi. We've just purchased land that's directly connected to Bjorkberg since the first proposal. I mean, it's literally in our backyard and we support the project. What I like about it, I mean, it adds units of housing for the community. I mean, people criticize price, but it doesn't have to be like the single solution for everything. I mean, truth is, like everywhere, it's gotten a lot more expensive to build. Like, we're coming from the San Francisco Bay Area. I mean, it's significantly more expensive there. I mean, some people, you know, they may transfer from their house here and they might leave a less expensive house. I like the design as well. I think it's tastefully done and we support it. As far as our preferences, just being connected to Sixth Avenue there, we like his proposal to have the utility hookup. I mean, we might, we don't have the bandwidth right now to develop that backlot, but somewhere down the line, we could hook up to that. So that was a plus for us. And we also talked to John today and there is some like trees right there in Sixth Avenue and, you know, he was willing to maybe like keep some of those as more of a screen as well. So keeping some more greenery, but we support it. And I, I think planning and zoning in the city council has been a good job as far as housing. I mean, there, you know, there's all these projects coming online and this is just one part of it. But yeah, good job.
Thanks, Ryan. Thanks, Ryan.
He's not speaking, just me. My name is Momachi Martenson. I'm Brian's wife. We just bought the property at 309 Fifth Ave, so bordering the Bjorkberg project and we were really excited about it. It would be really nice to have more, not just rentals, but homeowners in our area. And I think that that's an exciting thing. I agree with some of the comments made about the aesthetics of the Bjorkberg project and think that it would be a really nice addition to the area. I do empathize and understand that whenever there's change in a neighborhood, it can be challenging and hard, particularly noise, maybe traffic concerns. But I think that, you know, ultimately, Grand Marais needs more housing and I think that this could be a great housing project in the area. So I am in strong support.
Thanks, Momachi.
My name is Amanda Hand and I live just down the block from the project. Generally here to express my support for the project. I have a lot of respect for the diversity of opinions we've heard already, respect for my neighbors, whether or not I share their perspective. And I've learned a lot and other, other ideas and issues have come to mind in light of what other people have said. So thanks to this body for hearing those. In the grand scheme of things, I will have to trust this body and the city council and the city to do their due diligence and make good decisions. And I do trust this body and the city. I've seen good work here and I appreciate the effort to listen to all voices and be thoughtful about your decision-making. And also I understand that as a citizen, I don't always see the full, I don't have full expertise and understanding around where our input begins and ends. You know, we, we don't have a referendum on every single thing that happens in this city, nor should we. So I appreciate that that's up to all of you to know where community input is relevant and not. I, like Jan, I appreciate the project itself in terms of its artistic appeal. It is a different kind of housing and I've appreciated the new and fresh and innovative designs that we've seen in recent years. And I've been, I've lived down the block for 12 years, been in the community for about 15 years. And I appreciate just as much my neighbors who have five trucks in their yard and all sorts of cool old signs. And I would always hope that we maintain that diversity of housing and access and kind of people who live in the neighborhood. That's what appeals to me. I am most interested in affordable housing. I think that's where we have the biggest gap and that's where my passion lies. I think that when we build any housing, we relieve pressure in the market overall and that will create space for affordable housing in other places in the market, even though this project doesn't look like particularly affordable for our working and middle-class families or people in the community. But I hope you will do your due diligence and double-check that notion on behalf of the project. My understanding is that we lost workforce housing aspect of the project on the first round and I hope that there is an opportunity for that to be revisited, find other funding, whatever it is. That was a part of the original proposal that really appealed to me. Hopefully we'll see that again. I, I think cities are the place for housing density. I, I love a vacant lot in an undeveloped alley and street as much as the next Cook County resident. But cities are where we're supposed to support housing density. I guess my, my final sort of personal weigh-in would just be that as someone who's raised children here, who are young adults here, I would like for them to have opportunities to return to the community, work in the community and have housing in the community. This particular project would not be that for young people, but if it plays a role in taking pressure off the housing market as a whole and creates other opportunities for us, I, I support the project and I appreciate your work and you're done.
Anybody else?
Hello, my name's Gina Ireland. I live on 313 West Eighth, so right in the neighborhood. I work at the hospital and so I'm right at the front lines of dealing with housing shortages because we can't attract people to come. We can't even house travelers and it's become kind of a desperate problem. I have renovated the lower level of the house and don't, we can't cram enough travelers in there to, to staff the lab. So affordable housing is a really important priority for the community. These are beaut, this project is beautiful. I mean, the units are beautiful. It's probably going to be people with a lot of money who maybe live here part-time and some of them may be full-time. It's going to create a congestion in the traffic and I think this would be really, it's also kind of a difficult area. It has some problems because of the, the way the water doesn't, I guess, I think it has to do with the rock plate or whatever. It's kind of a difficult area to develop. It seems like a high-density housing like that would be really great to put in an area that had some fewer problems like that. I didn't get a letter, even though we're, you know, in the neighborhood. And I, I feel like if we continue to bring in people who are retired, we're not going to have the people to take care of them at the hospital. I mean, we're already there. So it's just something to consider. You want to have a vibrant community. You want to have families. You want to- You want to have a vibrant community, you want to have families, you want to have a place where people can afford to live, and people are heartbroken. They want to come, they want to live here, and they can't. So something to consider. Thanks for listening.
Yeah.
Thanks for the opportunity. My name is Julie Carlson, and I am a neighbor, three sixteen West Eighth Avenue. I'm going to start by saying utilities are a big deal in Grand Marais. And in the nineteen hundreds, nineteen ninety-five, I bought a parcel of property on Ninth Avenue West. It was really inexpensive, and I was very excited about it, and I wanted to raise my children there. And I wanted to know why it was so inexpensive, and my realtor at the time said, you're never going to get utilities. There was no road, there was no utilities. We spent from nineteen ninety-five until finally two thousand and one fighting with two of the neighbors who did not want change, and I get it, change is difficult. And we were going to build in their backyard, in their forest, and take away their trees. And one even had a tree fort, another one had a greenhouse. There were railroad ties, somebody put a garden, and an outhouse, a non-compliant outhouse on what was our property. In my mind, it's called trespassing. In their mind, it was their backyard, and so I do get it, change is difficult, and it gets very, very emotional. We finally did get Ninth Avenue West to go through, and by the time we built and moved our family in there, six other houses, single-family homes, were up with public utilities. Year-round homes, and five of those six homes had children in our schools. The neighborhood has changed, and houses have traded hands, and it all comes back to change is difficult, utilities are tough. We have properties in Grand Marais that can't be developed because we don't have utilities. And so I really would like, I'd like you to think about that when we've got all that property on the west side of town and people who really need housing. And a couple of years ago, I think it was two thousand twenty-two, we, the city, worked very, very hard on city ordinances and changing the lot sizes, changing setbacks for the purpose of more dense properties. The Bjorkberg project is using those guidelines. It's exactly what we said that we wanted at that time. I don't remember if there was a lot of public opinion about that. I know that I was at a couple of the meetings. It's, I'm excited about the project, and it is in my backyard. I think that there's a need for all sorts of different housing, not just low income, not just workforce, not just retirees, but you know, you think about common interest community projects that we have in Grand Marais, the condominiums, Grand Marais condominiums, and homestead cooperatives. Man, you try to get a unit at Homestead Cooperative, I wish we had a couple more Homestead Cooperative units, because there's always a demand. The Gunflint View Apartments, a friend of mine is going into those, and what I've heard is that she's going to be paying three thousand dollars a month. And you can Google an app for mortgage, how much your mortgage is going to be, how much house you can buy at three thousand dollars a month. At six point eight percent interest for thirty years with a conventional loan, you can buy a house for five hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's really, yeah, not here nor there. It's not your job, it's not my job, and it's not the city council's job to put the prices of houses, it's the sellers. Thank you.
My name is Janet Simon, and I live at three fifteen Fifth Avenue West, so this project is just right behind me. And my one issue is I just hope if the project goes forward that they do what they can to maintain vegetative screening, or if they have to take down some trees to build, that they would do some plantings so that the people who live around there would have some sort of a barrier. I've lived in my house for thirty years, and you know, you kind of do get, whoever said, you get used to the vacant alleys and the vacant lots, but if at least there were some trees that could maintain that, so it would disrupt the neighborhood as little as possible from what you can see or hear. Maybe it would keep the deer herd out of my backyard so they don't eat my tulips, who knows? But my other question is, you're getting eaten up too. My other question is, in the packet, they talked about the special assessment, and I presume is that if the project develops, there's going to be future discussion about Third Street? Is that why that information is in there?
That was just informational.
Because I just kind of wondered, well, what will happen to Third Street? And I know that that's not the point on the agenda for today, but you know, as we all know, that street isn't terrifically great. My other question is, if there's going to be an access on Fourth Street going from west to east, as somebody referred to here, there is, there's not going to be an equal access from Fourth Street from Fifth Avenue West, west where there's a vacant alley? Would the Fourth Street access just be on that one side and not the other side? I was just curious about that, so, okay, thank you.
If anybody wants to see that map, it is available on the website, in the city council, in the planning commission packet. There is a map, you can look at that. And I'd be happy to show it to somebody if you want to see afterwards.
You know, traffic in the area is increasing. What had Gunflint View with those fifty-some apartments, there's, you know, if every apartment has one or two cars, there's extra cars up and down and all this other development. There'll be more traffic up and down and back and forth, and I was just kind of curious where all the roads were intersecting with Fifth Avenue West. That's it. Well, I wish you well on this discussion.
Thanks, Jan. All right, any other takers? All right, well, thank you, everyone, for your comments, for coming up here and talking, and for being here today. This is where democracy happens, right here. And so, folks, would you like to join, or?
I'm Howard Headstrom.
I'm John Peters.
So I've kind of been asked by John to kind of help with this project here. I have brain death once in a while, and I take on one more thing, but I happened to take this on. John's a good guy. He has a real passion for Grand Marais and this project, and I think we're lucky to have him here. He's assembled a great team. His architect is Benjamin David Olson. He's innovative and acclaimed for his work, as people have mentioned in their comments, you know, it looks really good. John Lloyd, I think he might be here, MSA is a civil engineer. He does good work, is known here, and is familiar with Grand Marais. John has financial partners on board. He's recently been granted the Minnesota Housing Grant Award. HRA has been behind this project, first with Nathan Hale, and continuing with Jeff Brand and his board. So I've talked to a lot of community members about the project. Most of them agree that it's necessary in addition to the housing mix that is currently here and is anticipated and in the works. You know, I'm not here to speak to the cost of that project or affordability, the whole affordability thing, it has so many monikers. I mean, this will be, they will cost, and they will be fine, but I think it's going to be in the realm of, I think Julie said it best, I mean, there's, it's, you can't believe what anything costs these days. I mean, it's, there's no surprises on that. But I think John wouldn't go forward with this if he didn't think, and he's talked to a number of people, and I think they spoke here too, that looking forward to, if they downsize, this would be kind of the property they'd go into. And so it's not people from outside, you know, looking at, coming and investing here, it's people that are already here, looking for a simpler living, and, you know, I'm at the age that I can attest that as you get older, you think about a simpler life, less shoveling, downsizing. I'm fortunate to have a house that I can age in place in, but who knows what's to come. City council, this is the second time before this planning and zoning, and thank you last time for the strong endorsement. John got to the city council and was denied. The two main findings, and it's been brought up here, is the capacity of Third Street for additional traffic, and the future needs along Sixth and Seventh Avenue for the utilities. The city would have been happy to come, excuse me, the developer would have been happy to come to the city and say, hey, I've got this nice project on Block sixteen, I need utilities. They put those utilities in, and they can build this project. Well, the city is not, didn't want to spend the money, didn't want to make the assessments, so the developer went back and said, well, okay, how about if I provide my own utilities? And that's how the design was designed, to bring sewer water over from the intersection of Third and Sixth, over to the center of the block, run sewer water up the center of Block sixteen, and serve his needs. So one of the findings was, well, gee, you know, what happens to the properties on other side of Sixth and Seventh? So in meetings with John, and the architect, and the surveyors, said, well, how about if we just provide, in meetings with the city administrator, how about if we take our, it's not mine, but anyway, John's project, you have the main sewer water running up the middle of the block, how about if we provide easement to that line, to the west and to the east? And that, and the developer has agreed to provide that easement for future development. The other, the street, Third Street, you know, everybody knows that's a little deficient. After last fall, the city contracted their engineer, LHB, who came back with the proposal for curb and gutter and widening that street. It went on to put in a lot of infrastructure, sewer and water, but just dealing with the traffic, there is a LHB study, and you've probably all seen that, of widening. I measured the pavement that's there, it's fifteen feet, so going to a twenty-foot pavement width, add five feet to that. And I'm not a surveyor, so I don't have to look strongly at that, but the road is positioned kind of on the south side of the right of way, so that, I'm assuming that the five-foot additional will be on the north side of Third Street. You know, the whole traffic thing, the Bjorkberg project, there's a Wally Avenue that goes, you know, across the block, and that'll be one-way, just because, you know, you're on a wide street there, so the traffic will be one-way. So I think you're going up Seventh and down Sixth? So really, when you come down Sixth, you'd probably turn and go off, and then over to Fifth and out the door. So you really halve the traffic on that segment of the street. And lastly, if you look at the twenty-one, twenty-two project, dump homes that are there are anticipated, if you project the selling price, and I, you know, I haven't had those discussions with John, and, you know, there's, if they sold for three hundred thousand dollars at the current tax rates, that would create three hundred thousand dollars of additional tax revenues over ten years for the city, just the city portion. So I mean, it's not an insignificant project overall for the county, for the city, not just providing housing, but there is future tax revenues there. So I don't know if you want me to say more, if you have questions?
I think maybe if you're ready, because it is second time around, so we read this, and I assume all our commissioners have done their homework. Did you want to make one final statement before we go to commissioners? No, you're good?
No, I'm ready for questions.
Okay, great. Well, first of all, I'll start with questions if y'all don't mind. I would be interested in pointing out, or interested in you pointing out, the biggest difference between the first time and the second time?
Well, number one is the LHB report on improvements to Third Street, to help with the increased traffic flow, and of course, curb and gutter, it'll channel the water as well. Then the second one is this whole question of utilities to the blocks on either side, you know? Since normally, normally you'd run water, sewer up the streets, and access the homes on either side of that street. So it's a catch-22. City says, no, we can't provide the utilities. We provide the utilities, gee, now we don't have utilities for these folks over here. So it's a tough one to repel with, but in this case, we found some routes where we can provide easement, you know, and hopefully, hopefully shorter routes than to service those half of the blocks that face Sixth and Seventh.
Okay. Thanks for that. I am interested in knowing, so last time, we were looking at some more affordable housing units that were part of the project that I'm not really seeing this time around?
Well, the Minnesota Housing Grant, Minnesota Housing Grant comes with some affordability guidelines, and, but, you know, you go back to the PUD and the ordinance, I'm not aware that there's a requirement to provide affordability. So I mean, that's an interesting question. I think we all are, I mean, I wear many hats, you know, one of the hats I wear is a development real estate group that's working on an apartment, you know, in that project, we have both eighty percent, sixty percent, and eighty percent AMI units. So I mean, it's really hard to talk new structures, home-type units, and affordability in the same breath. I mean, I don't know if you can do that without a lot of subsidy, but, you know, as the Minnesota Housing Finance, or Housing or Housing Finance?
Yeah, Minnesota Housing Finance Agency in January awarded us an impact fund grant. It's about two hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars, and it's very simple, simpler than what I thought was originally. So anybody who makes less than, I think it's a hundred and fifty percent of the average median income and homesteads it, they get somewhere between sixty to fifty-eight thousand dollars off the cost of their house. And they have to homestead it and make less than that.
Yeah, so I don't really want to accentuate that, because there's a lot of hoops to a grant, and so, but...
So this is just potential at this?
That's a potential, but, you know, the key thing in there is homestead it. So that's not transient people, that's people that are going to live there and homestead the property, so.
But you've been awarded it, but there are some hoops, so.
Just, you know, it's like a living wage, and what's the details?
I didn't bring it up my kind, because it's a potential out there that could address the affordability issue. I'm not prepared to sit here and say that that's absolutely going to happen. Certainly would be good if it did, but...
And why wouldn't it happen? Just so that I can...
Just the paperwork and my brain power, you know, brain with, understanding it all?
So if you got the paperwork done, you would get it?
Oh, we have, so just, I mean, yeah.
The easy thing is, it's all, a lot of grants coming down the road now have prevailing wage requirements, and prevailing wage requirements roll up your costs appreciably. Even if everybody gets paid, you know, the prevailing wage, there's all those requirements and, I've yet to be really clear on that, there's benefits on top. So you really, the developer really... I've yet to be really clear on, on that, there's benefits on top. So you really, the developer really has to do a calculation of, you know, if you got a million dollar project and you got a two hundred thousand dollar grant that raises your costs, two hundred thousand dollars, is that worth it? I've not done that, mental gymnastics, John has not, but you know, it's, it's not money you wanna turn down either, so that's, that's all to be. I can't in good chance and sit here, sit here and say, okay, this is in the bag, we're gonna do this, and this is gonna be make it more affordable for folks who wanna buy, that's yet to be seen, but you know, certainly desired, put it that way.
Okay, it's desire, but you don't have any concrete sense that it will happen, that there will be any units that?
There's, a lot of this is preliminary because there's no permit for the planned unit development, that's why we're here. Let's go to the council one more time. There's a lot of work to get to this point, there's a lot more work to be done and could be done, it's just, you know, how, how much work do you do upfront? You know, this, so, you know, every nut and bolt hasn't been counted and, and ordered. I mean, this, this is a, a really good plan, it's been put together by some really professional people. Is there way more work to do? Yes. So not every detail is done and, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna sit here and, and promise what the completed project will look like.
Promise, but, but I would like you to speculate.
Well, I speculate that that's real money that, that would be hard to turn down, that will help make a number of those units.
So if you were to get that, do you have a sense that, and how, how would that result, what would the result be? Like, if you get it?
Buying down seventy-five thousand dollars of the cost of that, whatever you have.
Fifty-eight to sixty thousand dollars, depending upon whether it's a?
A unit, so every?
Per unit, yeah. So it's about two hundred and eighty-six thousand. Pretty simple, if they make less than a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, they put the application into Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, certify it, and they homestead it, which is two really nice things. So you have income limit and you have homesteading. If that happens, they, they reduce my costs, which goes directly to the buyer of those five units.
Okay.
And we have five units designed for it.
So only five units?
Yeah, it's only five.
Yeah, that's right, so this, that was the same as last time, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Which one? The ones that go up at an angle, sandy, sandy, sandy area.
You're calling units eleven through fifteen in the middle of the block?
Yes. The northeast corner.
Yeah.
When are we gonna build those?
Yeah, I think that was a question from last time.
Ah, you know, it, it probably will be the ones on the bottoms, southwest, and those would be most likely the, the first two parts. Timing depending upon, you know, who wants to buy them. We have interested people in those, for sure.
Yeah. Okay. I'm sure the commissioners have more questions than mine, so Commissioner Johnson, would you like to go?
So I have a question about the utilities and your schematic drawing, and I'm not good at interpreting sometimes. Can you explain to me the purple dotted line that I assume is one part that goes across the middle and then that one goes on the upper section?
The, the purple is sewer water coming up, there's one in purple and black. And the upper left, you see a, a red, a painted red, yeah.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, that's the easement for people to access.
Yeah.
So that is the easement there, and the other easement is down there on Wally Lane?
On Wally Lane, so those two red or blue, blue and green are sewer water. So then at the end of that, which is fairly close to the street, then would be an easement there that, that they come over and access.
So why isn't there an easement on the west side of Wally, to the other?
Because we're, we're coming across up above there.
Oh, I see it.
Oh, way up there.
Yeah, and that's the most difficult area, and there's an interest from the Carlson's up there to have it. So we've talked to them, but, but they like.
Where it should go, okay.
And there's also one up on Fourth Street, there's a little pink line.
I see that.
So.
Yeah.
All right, I just wanted to make sure I understood where the easements are.
Yeah, and, and here we're trying to accommodate, oh, the future somewhere. I mean, knowing your need to not box, not be boxed in, but.
I personally appreciate that, that you've taken that step. I think that says a lot about your commitment to our community, that you've made that adjustment, because that was a big concern last time.
Yep.
Sorry, I have to go back and what my other question was. Okay, the phasing or the timeline of all these various projects, I assume, like the state, you can't start there. So can you explain, walk us through what you're going to be doing first and what your timeline is?
Well, we'll probably start from Third Street on, on the west half, where there are five units. We'll either put all the utilities down the way, but more likely, we might just do the first half. Start with those first five, and then the five that are up at the other angle up on.
The northeast.
Yeah, the northeast. Then the next most likely will be way up on the top. And the bottom corner is completely up to haul along those wonderful people continuing to live there, and we want them to live there. That's our, our goal.
So you're not, your intentions right now are not to extend the water and sewer, water and sewer all the way at once?
We might, it depends upon the contractor availability, costs and so on. I mean, it'd be nice if we could just do it all right away, because it's less, just, you know, it's just getting someone to do it too. There are a couple of them that are interested if they can do maybe the first half, you know, so that's part of it.
Okay. And so my next question is about how you fund this. Are you pre-selling these before they're built to come up with cash? Or are you building all five units and hoping to sell?
Um, we aren't gonna build five units, so. It's a, so the, for the market ones, the market rate ones, typically those are sold, there's a down payment. Down payment goes towards land, utilities, things like that. And they, as the house gets built, they draw on it, and it's paid for basically by the buyers, okay? The Minnesota Housing Finance Agency is a little bit different, because those people don't pay as you go. They pay when it's completed and they approve it. So that's where, when you talk about the complications, Greater Minnesota Housing Fund has indicated, they will finance the construction financing, and that's where John gets a headache. And probably will have somebody helping with, with that, those details, so.
So that's what I'm just wondering, we know we have a housing problem, and I don't see.
Yeah.
Personally, I don't see these things not selling. But we also don't want unfinished projects, because we've had that before in our community. So I just wanna make sure we have good information, make sure this is the best project for this property, because it's going to work.
Yeah. I have never not completed a project. I've done one in Northville, one in Nona, I've done three in the city of St. Joe. And I think there was somewhere in the package, there's a recommendation from the city of St. Joe. They've all been completed, people are happy, and it's added to the vitality, so.
Universally, people have studied this project that, that I know that, that like housing, I mean, they're all blown away by the design. I mean, it's a very nice design, very clever, this Benjamin, Benjamin Olson is very good. And, yeah, I, I think it's, it's close to a no brainer, but it, it comes back to the developer. John has, has put a lot of resources into this, and you know, you ask about all the construction details, well, you can only go so far. You know, and this is, until approval comes, I mean, that's when the real work comes down and getting the nuts and bolts of all those, a lot more of those questions answered, but you know, all it is, is gonna experience, his experience in construction and, and people around him.
I have one more question about the road. So this is a narrow road, twenty-two feet, you said?
Bloody, it's fifteen feet now, it's going, the proposal.
Oh, no, that, what, what you're gonna put up is the?
Oh, that's like sixteen feet.
Sixteen feet.
Paved on the, on the avenues and not paved internally. That's just for wa, that's for water, you know, penetration.
Okay, so it's not paved where it's your private road, one-way road?
Right.
But you will pave it up and down the avenue?
Yes, and that's, that's all agreed to with a development agreement with the city, how that all works and a license and all that stuff, so.
Let's, let's make sure the ten cents are clear, it's not currently agreed to. It would be covered by a development agreement.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be part of that.
Yeah.
And I'm, and just remind me again, what the width of those up and down avenues?
Sixteen feet.
Sixteen feet.
One, one-way, one-way, those would be one-way streets.
And if we have more development on either side by the city, those other parcels?
They might have to get widened there, you know, I don't know, because this is.
So this is a question for me to ask our city administrator.
Right.
How, how does that happen? And is that all on the city then? Or does that follow the whoever must develop up there?
That's an open question, so let's start with how it gets to where it is. There's currently a gravel driveway on Fourth Street, approximately where they're showing the access to the property right now, that Tony Iverson built with a license with the city. So that license provided him with permission to build the road and the requirements that he maintain the road, and that we don't have any public obligation to do that, that it's open to the public, and that if it's needed for public purposes, they have to remove his improvements. So it'd be a similar deal for these avenues, where the developer would be responsible for building what we agree to allow in the right of way, and for maintaining it, and for allowing the public to access that public right of way. And if we need it for any public purpose, that it would be their responsibility to remove it. Well, really, the only likely public purpose we would need it for is the one you're talking about. That we want it to be a more sufficient road to access the properties further up to the north on the avenues. When we do road construction projects like that, we would typically assess the people that are benefiting from it. And we would only do it because they were asking us to, so I would imagine that they'd be interested in us doing that and being willing to pay for access to that property, at least to some extent. But it's not clear just what those numbers would look like, or which, who would have to pay what, or any of that stuff, that's all open question.
Thank you for that clarification.
How about easements then, Mike? Same thing, I mean, are all, all those questions been answered, or?
Not close. I think the easements are a great concept to talk about, how to handle this issue. But I don't really understand how they will work yet. And so when I look at this map and, and the question about the one that goes to the west, for instance, is designed to access people that have actually said they might want to access it, that makes sense to me. But this is just a two-dimensional line drawing on a piece of paper, right? This isn't an engineered design. And is that the right place to build utilities to access those properties? I think there's a lot more work that needs to go into answering that question. And then how do those neighbors actually gain access to those utilities? What legal rights do they have? What steps do they have to follow? What is it gonna cost? All those details still need to be worked out. I don't know how any of that works.
And that would be in the development agreement, right?
We could cover that in the development agreement. I think then the, the other issue we'd need to cover is, is this still private utilities? If we're having other property owners connect to it in the future? And if not, what, are we gonna handle these utilities a little differently than we had considered? These are all answerable questions, but there's a lot of details that I think we need to work out before we're done.
But forced on the developer because the city doesn't wanna provide the infrastructure?
Yeah, I don't think that's quite accurate. So I would go back to Howard's claim about that and say, if the developer wants the city to provide utilities on Sixth and Seventh Avenue, they've been told many times, there's a process for them to request those, they haven't done that. If they do that, the process will go through is to invite the neighbors to talk about, should we do an improvement? And then if we decide to move forward, then we'll do a design, and then we'll talk about the cost, and then we'll talk about assessments. So before any of that actually happened, I think the developer said, hang on, we don't wanna charge our neighbors assessments. Plus, it's gonna be twice as expensive for us potentially to do it in Sixth and Seventh Avenue, so this compromise works better for everybody. Never was a day the city's not gonna do Sixth and Seventh Avenue, we were not asked. Okay, thank you.
I have a question about that, but so they're building utilities in here, but it has to be the city's standards, correct? I mean, is that part of the development?
Yes and no, so let's just say this.
If we are gonna connect other cities?
We're gonna make sure that they're designed by a licensed engineer, one that we trust and would use for our own purposes. But we're not responsible for the maintenance of them, and so we're not going to have the same stringent requirements on construction inspections, for instance, that we would if they were owned by us and we had a lifelong maintenance obligation on them. So I'd say, yes, they'll, they'll be designed to our specifications, but we're not as interested in their construction as we would be if we owned them. And that interest comes at a cost, and a fairly significant one. So it's cheaper to install them and have them be private, only because you're pushing off that maintenance obligation in the future to these owners rather than to the city.
Which is done through the HOA.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's not unprecedented. We have those situations in the city right now where there are private utilities that are built to our standards, but we don't own them and we don't maintain them.
Are those used as access for adjoining properties not part of the HOA to hook into?
I don't know that we've got anything like that, so this would be new, and like I said, I think the concept is a good way to talk about solving that problem, because what we're really looking for here is a compromise that doesn't create significant financial obligations on neighbors who were never involved in this project in the first place, and still allows those properties to be developed in a reasonable way in the future. So it's a complicated question.
It's the catch twenty-two, you know, how do you, how do you get it built in a timely manner? How do you not use all the developers' money? How do you provide for the future without having all the neighbors, you know, pay the cost? I mean, it's, it's been a difficult balance, but you know, certainly this, and, and you look at the map, I mean, this easement could come, you know, off of, off of Wally Lane as well, I mean, you're close to, so.
It's a suggestion, a little work, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. You're not dealing with unreasonable people here, you know, that's been, Mike's been pretty good to work with back and forth, and you know, John has been very flexible too.
Commissioners, more questions?
One, one thing I was just gonna mention too, in talking to some of the neighbors on Sixth Avenue, their preference would be that our sixteen feet be, take up less of the woods to the east. We're very unmeanable to that, and I spoke with John Boy, our engineer, it's, it's very doable, so that'd be kind of a city decision as, you know, because it'd need to be in the center or off a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
Good, great, appreciate the opportunity to present this the second time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very good.
And thank you. So back to the audience.
More commissioners? Somebody asked a question at the beginning of the public comments about what authority are we acting on here? Why are they asking us for permission? What can they do without permission? I think was the, maybe not us, but underlying question there. The reason that they need to come and talk to you at all is because the utilities that exist, the surface property only exists in the very southeast corner of the property where the existing Iverson house is. And although it is currently subdivided, those lots, other than the ones that the Iverson house is on, don't have access to municipal sewer, which means that our zoning ordinance would require them to be two hundred feet wide and three hundred and fifty feet deep, which is pretty much a city block, and you couldn't put two of those on a city block. So the existing permissions to use this property with its existing utility connections is done, it's taken up. So the way to access the rest of the property is to construct more utilities. And then when they wanna access it in this way, which is a re-subdivision, basically, we're gonna ignore the existing lot lines and draw new ones where we're gonna sell these lots instead. They have to come back and ask for a conditional use permit to do it this way. There's other ways they could ask, they all end up looking about the same, which is, there's a public hearing. We invite the neighbors, you have a series of legal test questions that you need to answer, this board makes a recommendation. This board makes a recommendation of the council and the council makes a final decision. In order to avoid that, would require the extension of utilities to all of these lots in some other way. And I think we've touched enough on that, that I won't elaborate.
Can you also address the um fact about letters to neighbors and who you sent letters to and when's letters went out?
Uh, no, but we'll we'll get that back to you, we'll we'll send you a list of all the addresses that we sent letters to and when. I mean, some people said they got and some people said they didn't, I have no answer for that.
I think um. The only thing that I'm concerned about is have have there been enough substantive changes from one point O to two point O? To and and maybe we can't control what happens at the next level for the for the city council, I don't wanna speak for them. But um, clearly, we've been asked to vet this differently. Uh, and and do we feel like this is? Have they answered enough the questions?
You know, I think, you know, we are a separate body. And when we take it up, I mean, we are taking it up on on behalf of the council. And I feel like we follow our findings, we do our best to follow that out. And it will lead us to a decision, right, we'll make a decision from that. I I hear your concern, like, you know, we sent this to the council before. And is this substantively different? Uh, it is different, I feel, I mean, I think that there are things in there that we can see. I think the thing that would make the biggest difference, in my opinion, is those easements, if that could be. Hammered out in a way that. We could feel that that's gonna happen, that that there would be a way for us to make an agreement. That could go forward and make sure that those neighboring properties could reasonably realistically. Have access in the future, there was a way to establish that, to my mind, that would be a big step. And I think the other part was that on Third Street, but as you know, and maybe some of you all, you know, we've talked a lot about Third Street. And I think we already have that kind of in our hopper as something that we are in discussion about, I don't feel like we've come to a conclusion exactly. But we know what we can do, we know what's within our, you know, what we could just pay for as opposed to assess. So, I don't know, I I I I feel like there is, I feel like it's definitely, uh, you know, it was. You know, we have all agreed. Last time that was a good project and and I still think, I personally think it's still a good project. I feel like the. You know, there are things to be hammered out, but I think they can be hammered out, I think that we can. Come to an agreement about those easements to make them really substantive and. You know, have have that really happen for ourselves and the the neighbors, for the city and the neighbors.
And I think the redesigned road, the one way traffic around, I see that as maybe. Helping with the concerns last time about traffic on Third. Going west, cause well, we kind of, people may still go back around that way, but. I just think the flow of the traffic and having it, one thing, I was kind of concerned about how narrow that was. But it does cut down on people just driving through and around to check out the new stuff, I mean, it's um. I don't know, I I feel felt like that felt better on the plan itself.
I can still see a lot of folks using Third to get this set up.
Yeah, to head west, yeah. To head west, you mean to come around in circles? Head back.
Uh, which I guess is another point, um, so the other change that was made was this this contribution to road improvement. And um, it seems like settling out or the proposal is twenty five percent roughly of that cost. We got a cost estimate about two hundred thousand, it's probably a little light, but um, is is fifty thousand enough? That's that's the question, this, I mean, we would, yeah, we're talking about third, but why are we talking about third?
Right, well. We've had a lot of talk about.
That started with this application, that started with this application.
For sure.
Well, and it's also, you're talking about Third because you haven't kept up, city council wasn't kept up on maintenance of our city streets.
Well, what about you county commissioners, you haven't done so good either.
We're let let's talk about city doing its job so that we can have more infrastructure and more housing to contribute to our tax base. And relieve the taxes for all of us.
Yeah, cause really Ben, my response to that is like, I'm, I mean, yes, we're talking about Third because of the project, but really. It was our job to have done that road anyway.
Sure.
You know, the fact that they're contributing to it, it's like, that's great, but it's really our responsibility, you know, I mean, that should have just been built. Well, let's let's back up a second then, I mean, that's a fair policy position for the council to take.
Right.
But it's not the one we've taken. The the city doesn't just build streets because it's our job to build them. We build them because the property owners want access to their property, ask you to build them and contribute to their construction. So that is not what happened here, right, this road, I'm not sure when this gold trail was pushed through. But I know why it is the way it is, right, it's difficult topography and there's a lot of rock right there and there's no utilities. So they built something that was adequate for what they thought at the time. Uh, I'm not sure there was ever a trigger that would have required the city to say it is now our job to make this different. The neighbors certainly didn't come and ask us to do that, there wasn't any clamor in the community to do that. Like, the issue came up when this application arrived, it makes sense. Then then you look at that road in a different light and you think, oh, no, it's not adequate for the way it might be used. And and maybe the only other thing that came up was the Highway sixty one project. There was some cut through traffic that occurred there. That I'm not sure there's any measurable amount of that that's left. This is a pretty low traffic street and all of our streets are honestly, but this one's pretty low. So I think it's fair to say either it's fine the way it is or we'd like it to change. It seems like there's something in between there that would serve this project the best. That, uh, and I look at the Third Street between Sixth and Seventh Avenue, for instance. And know that a good portion of that they're going to destroy and have to reconstruct to build their project anyway. And so why not just have them take that responsibility and we'll take the next block? And that'll be our city responsibility and they can handle this block. That makes more sense to me than a contribution of of a an amount. Fair.
Yeah, I like that better. Um, I'm sure it's in the development agreement side of things, but like because of the non-public privately maintained. You know, the kind of way they're going about that, when units, I mean, if they're going twenty one units, is there. You know, I know they're building out their infrastructure, they're maintaining their infrastructure. Are they gonna, is it each one of those units is gonna get the usual water sewer power fee? That they're gonna have to pay for over across the twenty one units?
Yeah, so. Recently, the Public Utilities Commission did away with the facility fee portion of that fee. So the total fee now is three hundred for water, three hundred for sewer, one to two hundred for electric. Still pretty significant, but what those fees are designed to pay for are the pieces of equipment that we actually provide to. That, a meter, the connections for the meter, potentially a valve. Uh, and you know, they're not actually covered by those fees, so they for sure would. Unless there's some uh, proposal here to not meter these, but I wouldn't see how you could do that if you're selling them separately, so. The a thousand dollars of utility fees is a drop in the bucket at least. Anyway.
Well, I guess my only comment would be is I think in the changes, I appreciate the work that you've done, John, and I I would say. Does, I mean, I do think it's great that you got the finance, Minnesota Housing Finance uh, funds. And um, to Howard's point, if it's like, well, it's a million and now it's gonna cost a million too because we use prevailing wage. Well, we have five potential workforce housing, again, using the AMI. Like, yeah, sure, like, I guess, like, if you look at it as an account, that's true, but if you look at it as like what we're trying to do. Here, with the policy changes, the zoning changes, the things that we've done and what I think you're trying to do. I think it is worth the extra effort, even if you do need to have some help to help you do that, because, and I think as far as like um. Gaining support and not having, I mean, there's a lot of support in the room, but I think as far as like. Again, community based, if you're, if that's really your intent, I think that's.
We wanna do it, yeah.
So, I mean, I I I I see that as being, and and actually, I think like it makes a neighborhood much more vital, right? So if you consider your little block a neighborhood, you get families and not just seventy plus in there.
Sorry to be negative on that, but I just, you know, cautious about putting too much in the public record that, ooh, you look back, you can't do it, but yeah, certainly the tensions there.
No, I I didn't mean, I didn't take it as negative, but I think, I mean, I was saying like flip side of that is like, actually, it's a really good positive for you with. Some more paperwork, yes, but um.
Any more uh, questions or discussion, missions? I'd like to just take two of the thoughts that you've talked a little bit about, put them together, and Ben's thought originally was the council had. Their own decision that they made with reasons behind it. And I don't think it's wise to just send this back without having really dug into those reasons and at least provide. Your opinion on whether they've been addressed or not, and you you've done some of that. One of them that we've talked about is this utility easement question. And now it's more of a process and timing issue. Is this something that you wanna see more information on, a slightly better version of with more details before you're ready to make? Your finding on that yourself? Or is this something that you want to send on its way and have the council do that work? My preference would probably be the former. Like you're suggesting that maybe we get more specificity around. Yeah, let's take this concept and turn it into something that people can explain and understand a little more clearly.
Yeah, I think it's important that we just, I mean, everybody wants the best for this project, right? I think, so um, let's just go the extra step, get the right information. Get it on, I mean, I was a little bit disappointed that the packet was light, it way, it didn't have all of the things that we would normally have in a. Conditional use packet anyway, you know, stormwater systems, you know, all of those things, right, so. If we if we wanna put our best foot forward, we have to have all the information. And. Uh, yeah, I think our, uh, in, sign one, I think our colleagues at the city council deserve that as well.
I just wanna be clear what you're requesting that they do, is it the LHB plans that we need to see? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, MSA did the plans for them and uh, we did have those engineered drawings at some point in the previous version of this. So I'm sure we could get that back and look at those again, what I'm talking about is, we've got a concept. And the totality of it is a dashed purple line on a piece of paper. And I think it's an important concept, like, it's a, it's a movement towards trying to address what the city council said one of the problems was. But it's hard to know whether this is adequate or not without really thinking through mechanics of it, how's it gonna work? How do people connect to it, what do they owe if they do? Uh, if they do, is this now still a private utility or is it public? I think just let's work through some of those questions and 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 it seems like people like the idea, so let's work with it now. You know, like on the, the, you don't wanna do too much development and then find out nobody likes it anyway, so but you all do like it, so let's keep going.
I I I really pushed for a decision today, I mean, we really. John needs some certainty, I mean, how much more work can we do without knowing where where this is going? And, you know, certainly a willingness on John's part to.
Worked in a development agreement.
Yeah, worked this through, it was a development agreement, uh, you know, where are those lines and the page go? You know, those aren't set in stone at this point in time, I mean, the the concept out there is. There'll be utilities there, uh, it's very minimal to say, how do we get those utilities over to those other blocks? When development happens, so uh, they that can come off in several spots there and and. You know, I would certainly lobby for for a vote today moving forward. Uh, there's some work to be done before next week's council meeting, but, you know, summer's going away and and. This is, the developer may go away, I mean, you gotta, you gotta have some. Decisions here.
I I think you understand the concern is that, as as Ben pointed out, like, well, we can say, yeah.
I get that.
Doesn't help you either.
Yes, but. This can't be an endless process of back and forth and and, I mean, engineers are expensive and surveyors are expensive and all of the architect. Where, I mean, this is all. You know, I think we all anticipate, there's quite a bit of work once you get the plan, you have development, yes, vote. You know, this isn't, I explained it earlier, I mean, we don't have all the answers, you're not gonna have all the answers, there's no. There's no incentive to go. Uh, engineer and and design this out to the nth degree when you don't even know if you can do it, so. Um, you know, the question right now is.
The engineering first time though.
There's a long way to go, yeah, I mean, yes.
I know, I understand the difference between a final like engineering plan and what we had in the first round, but we didn't have a first round, I asked for it today and I was sent today. But it was the last one, it didn't, it wasn't this, so.
Well, that is, yeah.
Which again, I know it takes money, I know John did, takes time to do all that stuff, but I I think like, you know, my, again, like, I think I brought that up last time, even though I voted for it. Like, I still, I understand how stormwater works and the amount of water coming out the site has to like not exceed after development of what comes off the site naturally. Totally get that, but you do also look at like. That potter is dumping out on the Third Street, we know that's Third, that Third Street is completely underbuilt and. You know, I I would like to see like where where does that tie into all the new sewers work in Fifth Avenue West that got completed, right? Which wasn't done in August, was it? And whatever, like when we, if we had all that stuff, that's, so.
I think it was.
That's, that's, I guess, my, you know, I don't, I don't think that we're saying that you need to go back to MSA. And like, alright, we're gonna, I think everybody here wants to say yes again, but we wanna say yes. Having the information in hand. Informed to be able to get it to the city council so that. It passes to the city council like we did what we were supposed to do and ask the questions and we weren't just going on, oh, we'll get that to you.
Well, I'll come back up here if I can, if I may. And it's a chicken and egg and and, you know, with the those the letters that people didn't get. Uh, you know, this is submitted in a timely fashion and if there was deficiencies in what was in the packet, you know. Should have been notified before today and, you know, sure we got that and. Yeah, if if you like the project and you think we we can get there and work through this. You know, I would really ask for a vote tonight and send it to the council, there's some work that can be done between now and next week. Um, certainly talking to Mike and and trying to shape this development agreement, what that looks like. Um, invent that out.
So, Mike, is there in your mind any way that that could be done? That that we could somehow satisfy between now and council this notion of the utility? Uh, my prediction is not chance, but let's talk about what that actually means, what would it take to satisfy? What what answers would we need to come up with in order to? Make this concept something that the city council might be willing to accept? And I guess I don't really know, cause we haven't talked about it with the city council. But then questions in my mind are the ones I've already said. Okay, how, how do people access this easement? What are their obligations? What is it gonna cost? Is, if they are connected to it, is it still private utility? How is that gonna be handled? What are the maintenance obligations? Like, there's just some issues that need to be thought through. Uh, is, I mean, is there any possibility for that to be talked about and solved before next Wednesday? I don't know when I'm gonna spend any time on it between them and we'll probably pack it out tomorrow, right? So, it, it's not realistic to think that that's gonna happen, no.
Well, so what is the timeframe then? I mean, that, this is, you know, there's a, there's an opportunity to, to, if this is a good project and you're in favor of it, I guess there's work to do. You know, are we gonna kick this down and be gone another year down the road and lose another construction season? I mean, that's not, uh, tenable.
What you're looking at though, Howard, is, do you wanna try to deal with the risk now? Or just to take your chances with the risk next week or the week after, whenever it is? Maybe that's none of our business, if that's what you wanna do, then.
But it's our responsibility to pass along something we feel comfortable with. And I, again, we have questions that we want answered and, you know, I don't, I'm not, I can't speak for everybody, but like.
So what's, what's the discomfort part?
We wanna understand, like, with the things that we like from the changes, like, why didn't it pass the city council? So that you guys address some of those things, but there still is things that need to be a little bit more clearly understood of what that looks like. Because if you say, yeah, we're gonna let, yes, we did this nice thing by allowing these easements. Again, we don't like, but we're gonna charge you ten grand a piece to hook that up and we don't know, cause we don't have that. And I'm not saying, I'm not saying you need to get MSA out to like redo everything, but, but we, I mean, it's our job to send things to the council in a way that we feel comfortable with.
Yeah.
And especially when something gets kicked back to us.
Yeah.
Then we need to feel like we at least are not just like, oh, yeah, I know, you guys deal with this.
Well, there, there was five findings and, and basically they all boiled down to the same two. One is the traffic and one is the, the future development of the other halves of the block on Sixth and Seventh Street.
And the easements are your answer to one of those findings, but we don't have enough information.
Well, I, I don't know how to, you know, it's, it's, uh.
How much are you gonna, how much are you gonna charge? I mean, I.
Yeah.
Do you know? John, do you know?
Probably be prorated, you know, so if two houses are gonna hook up, be a portion of it, you know, something fair.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm confident I can work out something with, with Mike. Um, you know, there are, there are good questions that he brings up and they will need to be addressed, it's new. Uh, our goal is, we don't, we don't want the neighbors to.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
We, we don't, we don't want the neighbors to be assessed. Um, and I, you know, I thought about that, how do you charge in, in talking to people? I said, there'll be some charge for, you know, to hook into what we did, uh, something reasonable, I mean, that's the goal. Um, and then, you know, Mike, you talked about are the utilities, then part of it maintained by the city, those are things we can address, I think. And.
Are they answerable questions? Can we address them? Yes, absolutely, we can. Are they addressed right now or not?
So, question, it, other projects have been, uh, done and then, uh, they're contingent upon development agreement being done, right, afterwards. Cause I think most people have development agreements that are done later and why can that not happen here?
It certainly can at this level. I don't know whether that's likely to happen next week.
Well, so I guess what I'm saying is other projects that have been approved are contingent upon the developer working on a development agreement with the city that develops some of those intricacies that you are an expert at, you know, you do the research and you go with, you know, you, you have a broad consensus. So I wouldn't expect it to be done next week, all those details. I'm, I'm suggesting that it be contingent upon a development agreement that, you know, the city accepts. Um, which I, I think is reasonable and I'm comfortable working with the city on it, um, so.
Yeah, it, it, I, I think for me, and maybe I'll read it wrong, but if it's, if it's, you're kicking it down the road today, that's basically a no. You don't wanna do this development agreement or you don't wanna do this planning unit development. It, it is a big project, it's new, you don't have done this kind of a planning unit development, I'm taking the city. Uh, there is no model to work from, but, uh, what you do have is a commitment to work on that model. And you can't work on that model until we have some direction forward. You know, if the, if your answer is kick it down the road, that's kinda gonna be received as, as a no. So then, where, where does, uh, John, his team, uh, come up with the, the confidence to keep moving this project down the road and, and costs, uh, without some kind of a, yeah, let's do this?
How do you, sorry, pardon me interrupt, but I was asking Mike, or maybe, like, how do we decide in the, in the, right? So, again, I think it's great to look for allowing access on the adjacent properties that share the avenue opposite size of the avenue, but how, how do we make that? Who makes the determination then? Because obviously if now they're saying it's not quite private and it's public, then that's a, I mean, that is, that opens up a whole other can of worms.
Could potentially, yeah, so it's nice to be able to start.
Who makes that determination, public, private, in the infrastructure side?
Well, that's a, that's a conversation we could have. I don't think it has to be, you know, we make it, they make it, I think it has to work for everybody.
Yeah.
So, so on, um, I, I think your concerns are legitimate about not knowing all of the details of some, how some of this works, some of them I don't know. I'm comf-, I mean, if you, for example, made a recommendation to approve contingent upon this having a development agreement that addresses the easements, you know, which is, I think that's kind of the big one right now. And Anton, you'd like to see all of the engineering. We just didn't completely update up, we're pretty close there, you know? And I, and, and even last time, I think, you know, the engineering, there were certain things that the development agreement was gonna look at and say, how about this or whatever? I'm comfortable with that. Uh, it, it, I, I'm happy to take that risk to be able to start moving ahead on it, um, so.
Well, I mean, we've done that in the past, of course, pass things on with bad idea. That there would be a future agreement made before it was approved. Is there a way for us?
Just as a condition?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Mike said absolutely correct, I mean, yes, we can, we can do that. Is that gonna be received next week? I can't, I can't tell you that.
Yeah.
And that's where my concern would come in, and I'm gonna disagree with you, Howard. Just because we put it off today does not mean we don't like this project or we don't think it's a good thing.
I, I understand that.
What we're doing is trying to make sure it doesn't fail next week, okay?
Yeah.
So don't say that if we don't do what you want today, that we're saying no. We want to make sure we don't end up where we ended up last August and we're embarrassed cause they sent it back to us saying we didn't do our job and we're trying to do that job.
Yeah, so, you know, maybe what it is, is it's not ready for next week. But that doesn't mean that we're gonna have another.
What is the kind of the logistics of timing? I mean, do we have to go looking way out another month? Or is it something that could happen, you know, in steps quicker than that or how does that work? I don't.
I mean, I don't.
Special meeting?
We can have a special meeting.
We've done that for other things before.
We have to do that.
Okay, so that took like two weeks or something like that, it's more reasonable? And then I think, I think reasonable to, yeah.
And I don't know that we've got a good idea of how this work's gonna get done yet, but let's just imagine that your team can come up with some more details on your own that tries to address some of the questions we brought up tonight. And then we schedule some time next week to sit down and figure out, can we get that in something that's a little closer to finished format? And aim for not the fourteenth of May, but the twenty-eighth of May to come to the city council?
Yeah, cause that's, they have over two weeks, right?
Yeah.
So it's not, yeah, so I mean, if, if, if you're not comfortable with those details, I'm okay with that. I'm happy to work with Mike on some of those things, he's got good insights, ideas on things. Um, obviously I'd like to, you know, go to bed tonight and say, ah, you know, but, um, you know, we wanna do it and if those are the big questions, um, I, you know, I rely on Howard to help with a lot of the stuff. And I know he's gonna be traveling, so that's an issue. Um, but if we could, you know, have discussions next week and kind of get a good sense of, you know, it's just gonna work and maybe a special meeting, if you guys are willing, I'm certainly willing to, you know, spend the time on it.
Yeah, well, as we said, we've done that before.
Yeah.
So we can certainly.
So two weeks from now, do people's calendars look open for that?
They do now.
Twenty-first, yeah.
Yeah.
And then go to the council the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine, we made twenty-first, it's fine.
You need the twenty-first?
Okay.
Call it tentatively scheduled. And so what we're asking for from the developer before then is we wanna see a stormwater management plan. At least that part updated to meet this new arrangement. It's not that new, so it should be pretty easy to do.
Yeah, we're pretty close to it.
And we want to have some more development on the concept of the utility easements.
Okay.
To look at.
There'll be conversations with you though. Yeah.
Okay.
And, um, what about Third Street? Do we need anything else on that?
I think the idea that, that, you know, like you were discussing, it seemed like commissioners were also amenable to that.
Their responsibility on Third and between, because they're just gonna get all torn up with what they're working on anyways.
Yeah, and then we'll do the remainder.
So, just on that, um, there are limits, you know, we, we keep talking about costs and, um, we are willing to contribute up to fifty thousand dollars. Uh, our work is gonna be mostly on one side and it sounds like the widening is gonna happen on that side. And I would really hope that we can do it within that fifty thousand, you know, I mean, I, I don't, yeah, you know, it's always less expensive if, you know, the developer can do it or you guys have to pay for it. But that's where we're at and that's really, uh, that's, it's really tough right now, cause I still have to go out and get other grants. You know, we had, we had four hundred thousand that we lost. We did get another two hundred eighty-six, but there's, you know, and it's, it's hard to do, so.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I'd say fifty thousand is our limit on that. Be nice if we just pay, you know, everything, but there's other people that are gonna benefit from that also on the other side of the street that wanna develop on the, on the south side and I'm not comfortable paying for all that, so.
Yeah, you can't throw everything back to the developer just cause he's, he seems to be amenable to doing it, but, you know, that'll give us a couple of weeks to have more of those kind of conversations.
We should probably continue that conversation.
Yeah.
And it's important to know, this was one of the key findings the council said no because of.
I know.
It needs to be addressed or it's gonna happen again.
Alright.
I just one question, if you could make available to us what exactly you want, you want the road widened to twenty feet? Um, that's something I can, you know, give to our engineer and say, hey, what would it cost?
Yeah, John's got our feasibility study.
Does he? Yeah, okay, alright, okay.
Okay, alright, well, I think we all know what we're gonna do for the next two. Thank you everyone for, uh, coming. Adjourn, I can just adjourn us.
Oh, I mean to.
Oh, do we need a motion for this?
To say we're not voting?
You don't have to take any action on it tonight.
Cause there's nothing before us.
Pushing it back in a way that I think the sixty day rule is gonna be effective, so, yeah. As long as we actually do meet in two weeks, which is fine, and if we don't, then what can have a council take that?
Tabled and not rejected.
It's not even tabled, it's continued.
Didn't even.
Continued, okay.
Didn't even come up, so.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone.
Good, good questions and discussion, so thanks.
Yep, we are adjourned, thank you everyone.